Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any minutes from reports received in time?
Yes, we have the Collectors' July 2024 fees and the Treasurer's July 2024 reconciliation report.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I got Campo tomorrow and then we got the pre-construction meeting for the HVAC Thursday morning, right? Jessica, that's what that's for? For this, the annex?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Okay, on, is there an ARPA-Russellville thing this morning later or today?
Yes, at 1:30.
We have a Hardland Port Authority meeting on Wednesday. Wall Street on Wednesday. We meet and talk about insurance renewal. And then I think some of us at Public Works are gonna be talking to the city about the capital improvement sales tax extension on Wednesday. And Thursday, we have a meeting, the Juvenile Architect Alliance. What we call it, handage. Don't we have a meeting on Thursday?
I believe we have two meetings next week.
Oh, they're next week?
Yes, next week.
Okay.
Wednesday and Friday, I believe, to do the interviews for the construction manager apparatus.
Got it. Okay, that's my calendar.
Okay. Today, I get to have lunch with Taylor Blackwell, who's a representative from Senator Hawley's office. And then tonight is the Library Board meeting, but I won't be able to make that because I'm going to the American Legion for a 48 installation dinner. Thursday's annex HVAC. Then I've got nothing until Monday. We will have a meet and greet with Dr. Bates from State Fair Community College. So that is all we have. We'll move very long. Appointments by commission. Appointment of Todd Miller to fill the unexpired term of Tom Piper on the Cole County Parks Committee.
Make a motion to appoint Todd Miller to fill the unexpired term of Tom Piper on the Cole County Parks Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Robert Morrison and Brian Shaw to the On-Site Waste Treatment System Board of Review.
They can double their pay too if you want to while you're at it.
A motion to reappoint Robert Morrison and Byron Shaw to the On-Site Waste Water Treatment System Board of Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Doug Reese and Commissioner Harry Otto to the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission.
Are you good with those two, Harry?
Aye.
I might even abstain and vote no on this one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint Douglas Reese and Commissioner Harry Otto to the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Okay. Presentation from staff consultants invited guests. Do we have the MU extension?
I didn't see Elizabeth.
Well, then what we will do, we will stick Taylor Blackwell, who is the field representative for Senator Hawley into that slot. Would you like to kind of give an update? I know you've been at the fair all last week.
I was basically only at the fair on Thursday to help out with some stuff, but it's relatively been quiet. The Senate's been in recess for the past couple of weeks. It's not to say that he doesn't have some legislation that I thought would be interesting for you all. Senator Hawley is sponsoring bipartisan legislation.
Taylor, would you come up and sit? Because we're...
Oh, for sure.
We'll...
Got the mics.
I want everybody to hear all your wonderful...
I'm usually pretty loud, but this morning, I think I got this a little groggy this morning. But two pieces of legislation that I think you find interesting. Senator Hawley is sponsoring legislation to ban congressional stock trading. This would include all sitting members of Congress, the Vice President, and the President. It would immediately ban them from buying and selling covered assets. And then by 2027, it would require their spouses and children to also divest of those assets. Another piece of legislation that he has reauthorized, he previously sponsored it in 2019. It is the Stoic Act Supporting and Treating Officers in Crisis. It's really just to provide funds for mental health services to our officers. So he reauthorized that from 2020 to 2024 to now 2025 to 2029. So that is the two pieces of legislation I have for you. If you have any questions, let me know. But pretty quiet, pretty quiet right now, so.
That's good. Well, we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming by, hanging around. Okay, we will hold up. We will find out what happened to our extension program, and we will move on. Commission comments. Bids and contracts. Unfinished business discussion of Circuit Clerk's budget for 2025.
So Judge Beedham is not able to be here this morning. He's in St. Louis. He said he is available on the 27th, but requested that I answer any questions that you have about the youth specialist salary presentation, the information we provided last week.
You've sent this an email in response to that, right?
I did. I sent you an email, I believe, last, maybe Thursday or Friday morning.
Right, right.
I had a conversation with the Director of the Division of Youth Services who clarified that the 43.4 and the 46.4 is not the starting salary. It's the base salary. And then from there, they use a shift differential for evenings and weekends at $2 an hour, and then they add another 1% for every two years of service. So he indicated that pretty rapidly they could get up to 50,000, thereabout. When I did the math, the 46.4 would be 50,560 if they were an evening or a night shift, and that's without any years of service. I did ask for him to explain how they figure the evenings and weekends, and he said it's a very convoluted system. He could get me the information, but it's not like the 8 to 4 is the day shift. It can start at 2. He said one of them, he thinks it starts at 11:00, and I said 11:00 a.m. He said, yeah, it really just depends on which shift they're on and how that swings.
Where I have a little bit of heartburn on the number that he throws with that 50,000, that's presuming that an employee works 2,080 hours during shift time. I mean, the full year is shift hours.
So when we schedule our people, because we're 24/7 facility, and they are too, we have evening shifts, right? So we have a 4 to midnight and a midnight to 8:00 a.m., and they are largely just on that shift. We try and keep everybody on the same shift. Because otherwise, you're staggered back and forth.
Right.
Particularly as it, right now, where our people have to, most of them work a second job. If we're fluctuating their shifts back and forth, Melissa and I have been very deliberate trying to get everybody onto a shift where they stay so that they can plan accordingly and carry on accordingly.
Okay, but you have a third of the people do not work shifts.
Correct.
Globally, when you ask for the money for, let's not pick one person or one state. Ones and twos, how many folks are we talking about there?
Nine.
Nine.
Yes.
And between 4 and, what's the second? Your regular shift, let's just say, is 8 to 5 or something?
Eight to 4.
Eight to 4, okay. So you have a 4 to...
4 to midnight.
4 to midnight. How many people are working?
Three of those, right? So you've got three on the day shift, three on the evening shift, three on the night shift.
Okay.
So that would apply to two-thirds of them.
Right, so I think you're asking for three-thirds.
Yeah, so we're not asking to move to theirs. We're asking to be at 46 and 48, which comes in right in the middle. We're not asking to move to theirs. We're not asking to do shift differentials. We're just asking to move to 46 and 48.
Well, I think shift differentials would cause this lady to go out here screaming.
So when we look at it, when we would have to do the timesheets, it's very convoluted. And we are not supporting that either. I was just giving you additional information based on their salaries.
Right.
Our request has not shifted to their request. Our request just remains the same, the 46 and the 48.
Okay. And what we, or at least I did last week, say instead of 46, it was 43.4?
43.4 and 46.
And instead of 48, it was 46.4?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the judge stopped by and visited with me a little bit yesterday morning. I have a talking voice.
Yeah, I think we need to make some changes on it. I was probably closer to the 43.4 and the 46.4 as originally discussed. I didn't get a chance to call you and talk about it, Toby. I wanted to. I guess we just, it just doesn't seem like we're always gonna be able to compete with the state, so that's why I wasn't making as much of a jump. I was probably going a little less. I understand where you're coming from on it, and I think you brought all the numbers, and I talked to Sheila about it briefly as well. So I just didn't know if we need to make a wholesale jump like that. I would say can try something like the 43 and 46, and if that doesn't work, we're not able to keep our employees. We have to come back and fill them. I think we did that with the jailers as well. We made a couple of changes on them. So that's really where I was at with that. I mean, I don't have a scientific number or formula that I came up with. I just was going down to the original one. I thought it was a substantial jump and should help.
I would do, I would move in your direction two-thirds of the way between the difference only because two-thirds of the staff is working the shift differential. One-third is not. So there's a $2,600 difference. From those numbers, right? From what was, you're asking, what we talked about last week. Is that correct?
46 to 43.4?
Yeah, there was a $2,600 difference. And I would propose, or be, I'd consider two-thirds of the 26 because two-thirds of your people are shift workers. And, but I'm not saying that you have to make that differentiation inside your group, but just for the global number, what's two-thirds of 26? 16 and change, something like that, on top of the 43, which gets you right to about 45 versus 46. Am I going too fast there?
No, I got you.
Okay. But that's only one person.
Yeah. Well, you know, every time I would sign the pay forms for a new employee, I'm like, how do you get somebody to work that cheap? I mean, it's, so I think, you know, they do need to be better compensated. I, you know, I was kind of leaning Jeff's way on the 43.4 and 46.4. I would be, I would be good with the Western Commissioner's suggestion, which is kind of a, you know, half and half, so.
Actually, we'd get two-thirds closer to you.
Yeah. Yes.
But we've got till next week yet to sort of come to terms, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want to add it back to the agenda, Judge Beedham, so that he would be available?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah. Glad having you here.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at this. You don't have anybody that's been there longer than, it's like 2022.
Two of our supervisors, the operational supervisors, have been there. Okay, then you're right.
How long has Keith been with us, two years?
Two and a half.
I was kind of looking at it just to see how much it's gonna affect somebody that's been there for maybe six, eight, 10, 12 years versus somebody that's only been there for a couple of years and we don't have anybody there longer than that. So it's, they're all in the same boat right now, so.
I don't think with the salaries we're paying them, you're gonna get a lot of longevity.
Would you anticipate the folks that are using another side hustle, another job, because of the increase that they're gonna realize here that they may be able to let that go away, or?
So I hope so. I hope so. Melissa actually had gathered some information. A number of our employees also draw assistance because of their low salary or they have another job. So hopefully, we would adjust one of those two areas, or maybe both. We would like to see our vacancies come down. When I spoke with Mr. Odom, he indicated that the turnover rate is still problematic, but that's because of the nature of the job. So he said it hasn't been a fix-all, but it has been an improvement. So we hope to just improve, improve the situation.
Okay, and we are talking about effective 1125.
That is our proposal, yes?
Yeah, this is for budget year 25.
Okay, yeah.
So will they get a COLA as well on top of that? Because...
That included the COLA, so that included the...
Right, 46, what they're ask is COLA plus the additional adjustment to make their final, their final, their salary, 46 and 48.
That makes it much more palatable as well.
This is in the abstract. Well, if we were not talking about any raises at all for these two classes of employees, they would still get, let's say, 3% if that's what we settle on, right? So we're already 3% closer to what you asked for.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So your proposal is basically taking two-thirds of the difference between the 43.4 and 46, and then 46.4?
Correct.
And 48.
Okay.
That's kind of where we're at right now then, so.
Yeah.
I don't have any other magic formula to throw at it right now, but...
And maybe round it a little bit just so we don't get crazy pennies in there, but it's two-thirds of 2,600. What's that?
Yeah, that'd be 17.16. And then for the 46.4 and 48, you got 16.66, right?
Yeah.
That was 10.56.
If it's 17.16, I'd round it up to 17.50 or something like that. So it's kind of a round number.
I would remind you that we are not eligible for SURF so that we don't have that cost for the county either that is not getting added on.
Is there any chance of that ever getting changed by the... That's statutory, basically statutory, isn't it?
Yeah, it's been challenged. Some of the statewide juvenile officers challenged it, and the court upheld that the juvenile office is not county employees. And because we're not county employees, then we're not eligible for SURF.
It's definitely been challenged this few years.
It's been challenged, and there is a very lengthy finding with regards to it.
You walk and talk and quack like a county employee, right? And get paid?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise...
But it's kind of the same with worker grant.
There are the state workers called.
I understand, but...
It's just how they're established.
The W-2 is issued by the county.
We just have a bastard stepchild is what it comes to. It's...
You walk like that?
Well, yeah, I said it a lot more down than you.
Yes, but we will do something.
Thank you.
Was that your only differences now?
That's what we heard back on.
The attorney fees, are you good with raising that?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, that bottom number is basically the same. We're cutting back some of the stuff they're eligible to pay on, right? So...
So we're gonna increase what they pay for. We're just not going to, rather than them billing an hour, they're gonna bill for what they work. And we hope that if they can bill what they work, they find it off-putting that they're restricted in what they bill. They want to bill everything, so we're gonna adjust how they bill. Yes.
And I just gotta throw this in, Toby's salary.
We...
Their ask, are you wanting to, I think initially you talked about going lower.
Well, I thought we...
Their ask.
Well, we did, yeah. But you haven't replied back to what our number was last week, right? Your number was last week?
Oh, you did, oh, okay.
Oh, you have, you have or have not?
I, so I think that's the judge.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I guess then next week, we just need to agree on your specialists and your salary as well.
Okay. You will add that.
I should, Debbie, you got the notification that the war, that we have received the award for the $168,000? Did you get that email?
I did get it.
Okay, we went to log in, but we can't see anything, so I'll get with you. But the $168,000 grant has been awarded from the visit with Senator Lou Temmeyer. So that money did come through.
Good.
Which comes back to the copier and the hard drives unlikely. If, and we had looked at that money as it related to the building as well. So depending on if we want to set that money, I think we have five years to spend it. If we want to set that money aside for the building or if we want to go ahead and use that for copier and hard drives, but we can come back to that. I should bring to your attention, our generator has been an issue for about a month, and they came yesterday to fix it. And Melissa got a phone call in the middle of the night that the generator was hot and, I don't know, maybe shooting flames or something. So I... So the generator may be an issue, and our fire tech people said that our system is out of date, and we're gonna need a new system. And I think that estimate is about $20,000. This has all happened in about the past week. So we'll be back in touch on both of those.
Yeah, Greg Kamen, I think he talked to all of us this morning and gave us a little warning and... So you didn't have to be the bearer of the bad news to start with.
Notice I led with 168.
We got money.
And then if we replace it, it depends on how long it takes to get it.
Right.
It has been a big issue, but...
And Judge Beedham always appreciates us starting a little early, right? 8:30?
So if he has a docket, then it is helpful to start at 8:30.
I can start at 7:00.
Yeah.
What time you want to be open.
Just, I've got it set already, but just let us know if he needs it at 8:30.
Yeah, well, let's go for 8:30. And if that needs to be changed, we can...
Perfect, I like that. Great, please. Thank you all.
Is that Elizabeth?
It is.
It is, okay. We will go back to our...
Made it in time.
Presentation from consultants invited guests, the MU extension program update.
Yes, I just want to apologize for my tardiness and the casualness of my dress. One of the benefits of having a pretty full office now is that we are running, or I guess a double S word, is that we're running out of some storage space. And so today, we had planned to do a workday to rearrange our storage room, and then an alert went off on my phone reminding me of this meeting, and so I ran over as fast as I could, so I'm very sorry. But basically, here in this packet, similar to the ones I've given you before, this is just kind of an update from our different field specialists, some of which that are headquartered in the office here in Cole County, some of which are headquartered in neighboring counties but still serve Cole County, and the different things that they've been up to over the last couple of months. Right off the top, we've got Dhruba De Kal, our horticulturalist, and I can attest to how busy he is right now. We've got people coming in all the time with different plant samples, wondering what is this thing on? We actually had one come in this past week from a tulip tree with some really odd stuff on it that has had to be sent away for diagnosis. Soil samples, you can see there at the bottom, he's also still collecting tomato plant samples for folks who are having fusarium rot. He's got a really great grant for that. And so if folks are having issues with their tomatoes, they can bring in the diseased plant, and for free, he can get that diagnosed and give some advice to them about what to do. And then just this morning, we had someone come in asking for nitrate testing, even though we've had a nice wet weather year so far. I think some people are still a little concerned after last year how dry it was and making sure that their forages are safe for their cattle. So Dhrub is quite busy. Kathy Deacon, she is headquartered out of Callaway County, but she serves Callaway, Cole, and Osage as our new nutrition and health specialist. And you can see, I mean, she's really hit the ground running. She started just a few months ago, and she's doing all kinds of classes all around that tri-county area and reaching a lot of different people. As is Dawn Sebien, she does a little bit of different reporting, so I don't have her reporting in this packet, but she's our nutrition program associate. And they both, as a team and separately, are reaching a lot of different people in the area. Special Olympics, Day Solutions, that Halo group that they're just always reaching out to people and teaching them about everything from, you know, increasing balance and lessening fall risk for older adults to working with kids on nutrition and staying active. And so they do a lot of really wonderful work. And then Chrissy Brandal is our new livestock specialist, again, out of Callaway, but she serves a variety of counties in the region, and she's doing a lot of really great work and making a lot of longstanding relationships that will yield a lot of benefits for years to come. And then I added here in the back, one of our most recent Missouri economy indicators. It actually came out yesterday about online micro-business concentrations. This is from Xcede, which is our economic development arm of Extension. And so every three weeks or so, they send out these economy indicators about different topics. And if there's ever a topic that anybody's particularly interested in, I can run that up the chain and see what kind of data they can collect and put together some information. And so this just talks about entrepreneurs who are doing online sales and things like that and concentrations. And you can see, Cole County has a fairly high concentration compared to some of our neighboring counties. I think the only one close, real touching us that's a little bit higher is Boone. And so I always find those really interesting. I really like everything that Xcede puts out because the data is interesting to me. But other than that, the office has been busy with fairs. The state fair just ended, and so I know our youth program associate Dakota just brought back all of the exhibits that kids in Cole County, our 4H kids, were able to send to the state fair. I was really proud. My kids had a few that went, some of their friends had a few that went. And so it's really nice to have that representation at the state level of the good work that our 4H kids are doing here in Cole County. And then here in a little less than a month, the Extension Council will have their annual Fall Festival. And so I know that they're working hard on getting that ready to go as well out at the fairgrounds. That'll be September 7th. Anyway, that's a lot of words from me. Do you all have any questions or anything from me?
No, I read, I get the Catholic, or the unterrified Democrat, too.
Oh, yes.
You're mentioning there a lot, too, so I think...
Yeah, Neil did a good write-up on 4H.
You do a lot, and then you're gonna help us with our 250th anniversary.
Yes.
I've got lots of, we've got lots of things planned for you all.
Yes, I know, I was disappointed I couldn't make the meeting. It was back-to-school night for the school district, so I was...
It's, but we appreciate that in advance. I appreciate, so anyway, but...
Yeah.
Now you, you stay busy.
Yes.
How many vendors we have signed up for the festival on the 7th right now? We usually have around... Usually I have around a hundred and forty.
I was going to say, I think we're getting close up to a hundred and fifty or so.
That event is from eight to three at Jefferson City Fairgrounds.
Yep.
Three dollars a person, twelve and under free.
Yep.
A lot of cool stuff out there, a lot of cool crafts. You can come in, do your Christmas shopping early.
Yeah, and we always have a really nice balance of folks who are like tried and true, who come every year, who are the vendors. And then we always have some new folks coming in each year, so it's nice to see the mix.
Now, I'm going to torment you on the add-ons again this year, so.
Sure.
I'd still like to see the fair board change that to where we can do the add-ons and write one check for that instead of having to walk around and find twenty-seven kids and give them either twenty-seven checks or twenty-seven whatever you're, you're handing out. So I sat through a lot of meetings last year trying to change. I don't know if it'd change anything, but I'd like to request it again. I know there were other ones that I talked to this year that aren't probably as vocal as I am about it. But I think they'd like to see the change, too. So I think you should talk to a lot of the, the kids and find out what some of their donators were doing, so.
Right, okay.
Nope, otherwise, things are going good over there. We've made some other improvements, some driveway improvements on the concrete, working out, doing some stuff on the reception area. I wish something going on over there.
Yeah.
So, appreciate it.
Yes, of course. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you, go back and clean out closets. Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for setting twenty-twenty-four tax levy and approving the county tax levy for twenty-twenty-four.
So if you want to go ahead and open the hearing and see if there is anything, and close that right first.
Okay, we will open the hearing. Is there anybody who, Mr. Rysik?
I just like observing public hearings, and I've observed many where nothing happens also.
Okay. We have no one who wishes to speak, then we will close the public hearing.
And so then setting the tax levy, there's two tax levies that you, you gentlemen approved. One is the general fund tax levy. And again, that one has the sixty percent rollback attached to that because of the EMS sales tax. So what we advertised and what I'm recommending is you set that levy at point oh-four-six-two for the twenty-four year. So we can do each one of these separate, maybe the best. So basically, it's taking a rollback because of the, um, the sixty percent on the sales tax. And you're going from point oh-four-eight-six to point oh-four-six-two. So it is a reduction.
I'll make a motion to adjust the, this is our general levy.
Yes.
From point zero-four-eight-six-two, point zero-four-six-two.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Mark, where you guys sign that, Sam?
Thank you.
The second tax levy is the Public Works Road and Bridge Tax Levy. What we advertise and what the ceiling is, is the point-two-seven-eight-three, and that's what I'm recommending. You set it, it, it did change from a point-two-seven-seven-nine to a point-two-seven-eight-three. And overall, between both of the tax levies, it's going down, point oh-four-eight-oh. But Public Works does go up a little bit.
And we always have this conversation every year, Debbie and I, because I was like, we're, this is a state formula that she puts all the numbers into, and I just still fail to understand how that all works. But she tries to explain it to me. Her and Mark both tried to this time, and I've got a few more gray hairs after that, so.
Basically, the only increase in sets valuation this year is any new construction. Everything else stayed flat, so the formula plugged it in and raised it by the ceiling by, figure out one-tenth of one percent is the increase.
There was some teeny, tiny reductions, uh, because some folks who didn't raise their hand a year ago for the BOE had had some increases. You can actually raise your hand a year later and say, hey, my numbers were too high. And there was some minor administrative, we didn't have to go to BOE with it because the assessor's office accepted those. But it was tiny, 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 wouldn't matter. Less than one-tenth of, one-fourth of a...
Oh, that would have changed the total of value, or not really?
Well, there were some folks who received some increases in twenty-three, but didn't get to the BOE in time. They haven't changed, but they still can come in, in two thousand and twenty-four. And we actually had some, going back two years ago, that we had someone who, it was a commercial building before. This time, it was residential properties, but, um, anyway, it's, it's so minor, it doesn't matter.
Anyway, yeah, I found my tax, person, I couldn't find my real estate, by the way, but with this increase, my personal property tax bill will go up five cents.
Oh, my gosh.
But your general fund tax will go down.
Yeah, it'll go down a little bit.
So overall, you're still going down.
Hey, I was willing to not argue with you in here.
Sorry, I brought it up.
But then, I mean, my argument would be if it's only five cents, then...
Here, Mark, can we give you a nickel?
No, Mark wasn't the one arguing it, I was, I won my nickel. I, we had a, I don't know, it's a very good discussion. And Debbie tries to explain where all the formula works out and stuff, and they both did a good job trying to explain it to me. It's just still very convoluted, so I'm okay with it, yeah.
Yeah, I would ask you to approve the Public Works Tax Levy at point-two-seven-eight-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt the levy for Public Works for next year at point-two-seven-eight-three, which is point oh, point-zero-four more than it was for twenty-four.
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Uh, second, final reading, Budget Adjustment Number Seven.
This is just eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's the Cole County Clerk's Office, and this was a grant, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. The Hava Grant. So I do need action on it today, and it will change the budget from forward.
I'll make a motion to approve Budget Adjustment Number Seven for eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Hava, Hava Grant for the Cole County Clerk's Office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Ten.
This is for twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. This is an insurance proceeds that we received on a wrecked vehicle for the Sheriff's Department. I'll bring it back up in ten days.
Okay. Approval of care leave recommendation to the county commission.
Uh, we had two, uh, applications for care leave coverage. One of them, we did, we declined because the employee has, at least at this time, has adequate hours available as well as eligible for FMLA. Uh, the second employee, we did approve, uh, per care leave. We don't know exactly how much it'll be, but it, our program ends on December thirty-first, so we, we don't, we're, we do not grant any coverage or approve any coverage past that date. So from whenever this employee takes a time off until December thirty-first, we will cover that period of time for that employee. And that's what we're asking approval for, for the one employee that does qualify for the care leave coverage. Any questions, or?
Just get a vote that you approve the care leave time up until the date of twelve-thirty-one on this particular one.
That was the maternity leave one, right?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Care Leave Committee's decision on the application from the employee who wants, who's going to be awarded the hours between now and twelve-thirty-one, twenty-four.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Nay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have breezed through that. Do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
I'll make a motion pursuant to Section six-ten-point-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Real estate under Section six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsection two. Responses to bids and negotiated contracts under Section six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsection twelve.
Second.
Wrong call, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Taylor, would you like, uh, you want, would you like to use my office and just do some things?
Yeah, that would, that would be great, thank you.